Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order. Today is Wednesday, May 24, 2023, and it is exactly 6:30 PM. I'd like someone to do the land recognition. Any -- there we go.
His best theatrical voice.
And your best theatrical voice, yes.
Respectfully.
We acknowledge that the Nishtenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nishtenon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nishtenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nishtenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people, as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you, Lou. And Adam, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Keith Collins from the City Attorney's Office is joining us via Zoom. Hi, Keith. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you --
Hello, City Council.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember CC?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Here.
Mayor Fleming?
Here. Thank you. All right. Now is the time to adopt the agenda. If there are any modifications, Lou, do you want to pull something from the consent calendar?
Yes, I would like to pull item eight from the consent calendar so that we can talk a little bit about it.
Okay. And I'm going to pull six and seven, so.
And I would like to comment just briefly on item five.
Okay. Do you want to --
Just, we don't have to pull it. I've been given direction that I can just make a brief comment.
Of course. So could somebody give me a motion with those caveats?
I move we adopt the agenda with those changes.
Second.
All right. Do we need a roll call on this?
No, you can just do ayes.
All those in favor?
Ayes.
Any opposed? All right. Pass is five, nothing. All right.
Can I comment on number five?
Yes, please do.
Great. I just want to note that the vape detectors and monitoring cameras that are going into the Seven Hills Middle School are not surveillance cameras. Rest assured, I think it's important to make that distinction. No facial recognition, no license plates of the middle schoolers, not surveillance. So I think that's important to know.
And they're also not in the bathroom. They're outside the bathroom because that wouldn't be --
That would be illegal.
Yes. All right.
So Mr. Mayor will handle those items after your presentations and public comments, and the remainder of the consent agenda will handle those items separately.
Okay. All right. So let's go into the presentation, proclamation. We have the grand opening and ribbon cutting of Odd Fellows Gallery. Shaun, take it away.
Short and sweet. We have some representatives from the Odd Fellows here this evening, and I believe you have the proclamation in front of you. Coming up very quickly on June 2, I think, is their grand opening. So I can read it if you would like, Mr. Mayor, or if you would like to, and then would love to hear from the folks from the gallery.
Oh, for sure. I can give it a shot. Proclamation honoring the grand opening and ribbon cutting of Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery. Whereas business initiated development, growth, and expansion are important threads that bind strong communities. And the Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery is open for business at 212 Spring Street. And whereas Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery is a new business but continues the long tradition of Nevada City IOOF Outsmith Lodge Number 16 with a presence in the historic downtown since 1853. And whereas the Odd Fellows Lodge notes, with the opening of the gallery, the lodge is continuing to offer our building as a touchstone in our community. We feel strongly that its historically significant building is one of the premier gems in Nevada City with exceptional potential to grow and thrive. Whereas a grand ribbon opening, a grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony will be held at the Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery on Friday, June 2, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Whereas the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony will be an opportunity for the city, community, visitors, and other businesses to visit and enjoy Nevada City's Odd Fellows Gallery. Whereas the City Council and the City of Nevada City wish to recognize and applaud businesses as investors in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Nevada City does hereby honor the opening of the Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery and urges those who visit, live, work, and play in Nevada City to eat and shop local by patronizing the Nevada City Odd Fellows Gallery and all of our Nevada City businesses, or by attending the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony on June 2, 2023, at 6:00 PM. There we go. Come on up. Would you folks like to come up and say a few words? I've got to present this to you, official. Yeah, tell us a little bit about you.
We'll put it up on our walls.
There you go.
There's quite a few things we could say about the Odd Fellows which have been going since the mid-18th century, first in England, and since about 1820 in the United States. Of most interest to us right now is that when it was founded, a local lodge was founded in Nevada City in 1853 at the peak of the gold rush at a time of harsh relations between the native people and the incoming Europeans. We have to admit that the founders of the lodge were fairly fierce racists, but nonetheless, they chose to name our lodge Ustama after the name of the native village. It was probably forgotten for many years, and many people probably didn't really register what does this mean. The first two Odd Fellows buildings burned down in the 50s and 60s. The current one was built in 1873, 150 years ago, and has continued to be one of the loveliest buildings in downtown. But as I say, we never really understood how it connected with our environment. But recently, especially as the Nishtenon have become more and more visible in this area, it happened that they asked us if we would rent the space right on one of the prime places in Nevada City, on Broad Street, 223 Broad Street, for a gallery. We did that. They opened the Uba Seo Gallery. Uba Seo means Yuba River, and it's been, I think, one of the loveliest, most visible places in Nevada City for the last four or five years. So now we have started our own gallery in the back, the Seven Stars Gallery, and Ted Owen can say a little bit more about that.
I'm the chairwoman of the gallery, of the Seven Stars Gallery. Seven stars because supposedly the idea of founding the Odd Fellows was hatched in a, by some fellows in an inn called the Seven Stars. We rather like that. But when they founded it, the idea was to have a social network for the common man, for the miners, particularly in our area, and for the protection and support of the women, the wives, and the orphans. And there were a lot of orphans in the mining days. So it was a social program before we were lucky enough to have a governmental social program. And it was founded by the lower-income people, and so they weren't the masons or the doctors and lawyers, so they were the Odd Fellows. So that's always fun. And we are, we're a fraternal organization. So we are a nonprofit fraternal organization, which puts us in a kind of a halfway place between business and a nonprofit. So when COVID hit and Allen Rogers passed on, we took the opportunity to have his, the Rogers Framing Shop, and turn it into the Seven Stars Gallery. So during the COVID, that's when we transformed the gallery, a few of us at a time in there, scrubbing the floors. And that was the new vision, was to have, I don't know if you're aware of it, but fraternal organizations in the United States are dwindling in membership. And so to keep the charter, we have to have a certain amount of officers, a certain amount of members, or we lose the charter and we lose the building. So we rallied. It's gotten in waves. We rally and we save the building, and it dwindles. And so now we're, there's a concerted effort to have some outreach to the public because we're really trying to get rid of that old idea of what the fraternal lodge was. First of all, women are Odd Fellows now. They used to be Rebekahs, right? They used to wash the dishes and prepare the food, but now we're all Odd Fellows. And so we're trying to reinterpret the image that people have for us so we can become a viable organization in the county and the city. We do give charitable organizations every month. We have a good works committee, and they suggest the recipient of the month of what we can spare. Right now, we're using a lot of our money to keep the old place standing. And that's right, our generation, our people now, that's kind of our focus, although we still do our contributions. And so we're open for business and wanting people to come and visit us and find out what the new Odd Fellows are about. Thank you so much for this acknowledgement. We do appreciate it.
Thank you all for reimagining this, you know, traditional place in a new, modern sort of vision that includes everybody that should be included. So that's a big, that's a big thing.
It is big.
So really appreciate that. Are you folks still doing, like, evening events? I know that there have been some music there before and --
We are. Down in the gallery, we've had poetry readings, and we have a, every month, the art changes on the wall. We've had a lot of positive response to our art showings. And we have, we have a program to have young artists come and display from the high schools. And we've had almost everything, astronomy and --
And the music events, there's usually one about once a month, and some of them are organized by local empresarios like Paul Emery. Some of them are organized by the Odd Fellows, and some of them are just groups of people who ask if they can rent the space. So we're open to almost any possibilities.
That's awesome. Well, we'll help spread the word. Anybody else would like to?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for the history lesson, both of you. I think part of reimagining and forming the new Odd Fellows is acknowledging some parts of our history that are maybe harder and unsavory. So thank you so much for acknowledging that, and I also think it's important so that we don't make the same mistakes moving forward, right? I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I look forward to visiting the gallery. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
June 2 is also the Art Walk night, so.
Oh, perfect.
Great opportunity to come downtown, check out all of our local businesses, see some artisans in a variety of fashions, and of course, go over to the Seven Stars Gallery and check it out.
Oh, I can't wait to check it out. Okay, public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerned may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will be also, will also be taken on each agenda item at the time it is heard. So that being said, do we have any public comment from anyone in the room about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, if there's no, oh, here we go. I was waiting for you, Neil.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening all. I am Neil Locke, and I'm the city clerk, and I do knickknacks before the meeting starts so we, your minds can go other places besides what's on the agenda. The next, the next today is, this is a gourmet food item that I think we all enjoy, and it was quite a surprise. The French consume 40,000 metric tons a year of this product.
Cheese.
Snails.
Foie gras.
Oh.
Escargot.
Ah, right, right, right.
And it goes back as far as the Roman times, the recipe for escargot, for snails. And snail farming is called heteroculture, as it's the science of growing snails for Our restaurants serve about 1 billion snails annually.
Neil, can we make sure we can hear you?
Oh, yes. Thank you. You always remind me. It keeps moving, you notice. So next, now for the knacks. It's going to be a bridge night. As the city engineers here are going to talk about a bridge. There were three bridges in Nevada City in the 18, in 1850. There was the Main Street Bridge, the Broad Street Bridge, and the bridge at the end of Bridge Street, a wooden structure. The, oh, now we have to go to my other book. So they were all, except for the Bridge Street Bridge, the Main Street Bridge, Broad Street Bridge, all converged down by the plaza. And the plaza was the meeting point for Boulder Street, Nevada Street, Sacramento Street, and Main Street. And it was huge. And then on the other side, the plaza was down there, and across Deer Creek, miners started building their buildings. And one of them was the Jenny Lynn, Jenny Lynn Theater. It opened on November of 1851. The career of the Jenny Lynn Theater was abruptly and dramatically ended after less than 15 weeks of profitable engagement. A most severe storm of snow, rain, and hail, driven by violent winds sweeping over the northern counties, caused a great flood damage and considerable loss of life. From Sacramento to Downeyville, towns were inundated and bridge-spanning mountain streams were washed away. For several days, Deer Creek rose alarmingly, and on the evening of March 5, a heavy drift log carried by the Stroland Stream stuck and demolished, struck and demolished some of the supporting timbers of the theater. The following morning, the Main Street Bridge went out, and at noon, a large, excuse me, a large crowd assembled in anticipation of a major calamity. They saw a large accumulation of debris carry away the Broad Street Bridge with the theater and several adjacent buildings. And they all ended up in Sacramento, of course. And then the lot, the Bridge Street Bridge just was washed away, and they never rebuilt it. So that's, later on, they bought, they built the bridge over on Pine Street. The first was the Halliday Suspension Bridge, which had an issue or two at once, the Gault Bridge, and now the current Pine Street Bridge. And the Nishtenon were much smarter than the miners because they, their villages were never near Deer Creek. I think their village ended up by the courthouse, and that was their area. And Shelley Coverts had a grandmother or a great-grandmother that was born where the courthouse sits.
Really?
And for the, and for, for the Odd Fellows, if you go in there and look, the lodge chamber, the main chamber, Stephen Snell and his father remodeled that room, brought it back to its former glory, and it still looks very good. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And if you don't, say good night. Thank you. Thank you, Neil. Really appreciate that. Okay. Any other public comment in the room? If not, we're going to look online and see if there's anybody who wants to talk to us in cyberspace.
There is not.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Where are we here? All right. So we are on item number eight. So Lou, would you like to deal with item number eight?
Yes.
So if you want to take the --
You want me to read it?
Consent agenda as a whole minus six, seven, and eight, and then we'll do --
We did that already.
That was setting the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So the agenda has been set but not passed.
Okay.
The rest of the consent agenda.
All right. So as our kind counsel person noted, we're going to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exceptions as noted.
So moved.
And I need a motion. Yeah. And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Pass is five, nothing.
All right. Six, seven, and eight. What can we do for you?
So I just want to, I just want to understand. So these are grants, there's two grants. These are grants that the communities who embrace cannabis are offered some grant funding from the Bureau of the BSCC. And the idea with this funding is to mitigate the impact of cannabis on a community that embraces adult use. So we have a dispensary, and we allow indoor cultivation, so that allows us to be eligible for the grant. And in the first cycle, we're already into cycle two or cycle three. We applied to cycle cohort number two, and we received $1 million. Some of that money went to mitigate the impact of cannabis on youth. There was a big bucket of money that we set aside for youth, I think it was over 40% of the funding. And with that money, we decided to structure a cannabis education program for the kids at Seven Hills School and some of the other schools. And I just wanted to see where that process, because I see that Bright Futures is doing some sort of backend stuff for the more at-risk youth, but I just wanted to understand, because I haven't really got a straight answer from some of the people at the school, where we are with the cannabis education program.
So item number five, which you already approved, is also part of the, of this Cannabis Cohort II grant that is specific to just vape detectors and the monitoring cameras, not surveillance cameras. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Item six is specifically the contract with the school district to provide that cannabis education. So as the mayor knows, but maybe probably folks at home have no idea, that was originally intended to be another provider would come into the schools and provide this cannabis awareness deterrents type of education. That provider ultimately ended up not being able to perform that service for us, and we got this grant right as COVID was hitting, so everything kind of, you know, came to a halt. We picked this up early last year, and this is the culmination of it, is getting these contracts in place so that, in this case, the school district can start providing that cannabis education. The superintendent already approved it. In fact, he sent me his signed copy already. This will allow cannabis education in the classrooms as well as in the summer school programs. This will continue in the Cohort III grant over the next five years that we got. So this will be extended from a three-year grant essentially to an eight-year. this will be extended from a three-year grant essentially to an eight-year grant. And then the item number seven on your agenda is, under that same grant, is contract with Bright Futures for Youth to accept referrals of students into their existing programming, things like the Friendship Club and NEO, but also their newest program, which is called SAFE, which is for youth at risk and, and/or that are homeless, has some, has some resources for them in Grass Valley, and as well as does case management on their behalf. Bright Futures for Youth will also take, accept referrals from any Nevada City youth, and they'll do that in conjunction with our school resource officer that is assigned to Seven Hills, and all the schools now under the new grant, as well as the parks. So that is what exercises this. What we found out now is that we'll likely be able to merge these two grants to make it more efficient to be able to use the money, but that is still the combo. So that is item five, which you already approved, six and seven. Happy to answer any questions on those, but this gets us going. Both in the case of the school district, they had $20,000 per year, but there's $40,000, so we're going to squeeze, we're going to double up the efforts and provide more educational opportunities so they'll be able to actually, as that full $40,000. Same with Bright Futures for Youth, those originally 30 students per year, and under two years, that would be $30,000, so we're going to squeeze 60 or more. We anticipate more like 100 referrals over the next year through Bright Futures for Youth.
Excellent. And, and, do you have something with you?
I have, I do have a question about that. So Bright Futures for Youth already accepts referrals, and so this is, are they adding a component to their established program for cannabis substance use prevention? Because my understanding is that, that doesn't necessarily exist in that way, so I imagine they're adding this component.
So they're not providing the education component, the school district is doing that, but they are integrating into that, and so that, that will be
What does that mean, integrating into?
They'll be an active partner in the process, whether it's communicating with the school district directly, communicating with our school resource officer directly. And we've extended the school, you may not know, we've extended the school bus line. It didn't used to go, the furthest it went was kind of on the other side of Ridge Road, near Nevada Union, now it goes directly to Bright Futures for Youth Center there and the Litten Building. So it's, it's an opportunity to connect the dots, so to speak. So this $15,000 a year certainly would not provide for a body or a person, but it allows them to take what they're already doing and offer to, you know, some more kids, more youth.
Sure, and the idea is, is when young people are engaged in after-school activities, they're less likely to be doing more unsavory things, like using drugs.
Yes, and
Smoking pot.
Yeah, so it is a deterrent. We, we have a comprehensive measurement tool that we have to use for all of the Prop 64 grant that tracks all these things. It's de-aggregated, so you don't know anything about the individual people, but we'll have good data on how many more youth are engaged in these programs. There's before and after surveys and data points through the school and through the school resource officer so that we can evaluate, you know, the use of cannabis, because we know that has been incredibly on the rise. That's the reason for the vape detectors, because kids are amazing at finding new ways to vape. You wouldn't believe the things that they're in.
Apparently hoodies, drawstrings on the hoodies are now vape pens. And the way these vape detectors, it wasn't the first choice for the schools, they just had, they couldn't keep track of how the kids were vaping in class and out of class, and they couldn't, you know, stop it that way, so they decided where everybody was vaping was the bathroom, to put these vape detectors in there, which can also hear bullying or sounds of fighting, they can, it can really pick up a lot of different things. And, and it was funny, the, the principal came out and says, Doug, I got, I've got a vape detector, and he did it, and it shows all this vape, vapors coming on his phone, and he runs out and there's nobody there, because there's a time lag on the vape detector. So hence, we needed the, the cameras, or they, they thought they needed the cameras there, just to see who's coming and going out of that.
So happy to answer any more questions if that addresses your needs. We should take public comment on six and seven and then vote on it, and then we can move to
One last question, school resource officer, where are we with that?
So the school resource officer is in place. Joe Bush was promoted to corporal school resource officer. He's been actively engaged, not just with Seven Hills, but all of our schools. You know, we have Earl Jamison, we have Seven Hills, we have Deer Creek, we have SAIL, we have Forest Charter, we have several homeschool-based programs that participate in some fashion with Godoty, and then we have obviously students that live here but go to other schools. And that's why we refer to it as not just a school resource officer, but a school and park resource officer, because kids are at the park when they're not at school, sometimes at the park when they should be at school. So it's just that continuity of, of, you know, they're not providing primary law enforcement activities there, it's, you know, community engagement activities, so.
I think Officer Bush is a great choice. He's always got a smile on his face, he's always so friendly and nice and just, yeah.
And, and that is exactly what the school had requested, you know, they, they pointed out to us that the only time police officers are on campus is when somebody's in trouble. So there's this negative reinforced, you know, image of, of law enforcement that they wanted to change by having somebody who they had could have a, a positive proactive, you know, relationship with. I'm sure Ruby will be visiting the school soon and
Soon she's done with training.
Yeah.
Lieutenant Ruby.
Yeah, and so that will help a lot. But anyway, thank you very much for that. I just wanted to sort of catch us up. And then, so part of this grant is, we're piggybacking off of this grant and merging it into the other ones as far as most of these programs, right?
All, all the programs you see here, the vape detectors and, and cameras will be expanded beyond Seven Hills to SAIL and Forest Charter in the new grant. And the Bright Futures for Youth contract and the contract with Seven Hills to provide the cannabis education will continue in the new grant as well, so for an additional five years.
Thank you so much, Sean. I just wanted to understand that a little bit better, and I figured the public needed to understand that as well. Okay, so now
I move that we approve the contracts for items six and seven.
We have to do public comment.
I apologize. Eager to move on.
Is there any public comment on items five, six, or seven in the room or in, online?
No one online.
Okay. All right, now.
I move that we approve the, both contracts on item six and seven of the consent agenda, no longer the consent agenda.
I second.
The no longer consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes five, nothing. Okay, moving on to item eight. Consideration of Resolution 2023-22, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, adopting a list of projects for fiscal, fiscal 2022-23 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. And take it away, Brian.
Well, I'm here to answer any questions about this?
Yeah, since I, since I was the one who pulled it, there is, by the way, I want to acknowledge and welcome Jim and Laurel Montrose to the public. Hi.
Hi, Jim.
And after last week's Fire Safety Advisory Committee, because we live in the same neighborhood, we walked home, and they were pointing out to me the problems that they had along Sacramento Street. So when I saw that this particular motion has included in it a Sacramento Street component, I had a couple of questions about that. It says this project consists of roadway rehabilitation, and sidewalks will be widened and enhanced at intersections. So how wide are we talking?
So this, this project's in the capital improvement plan for 25, 26, so we haven't done the design yet, but it is an important project. It's much needed, and there's a little bit more right-of-way width there because it used to be the highway. So I, I don't know sidewalk widths yet, but I, I just think strong emphasis would be put on safe crosswalks and, and wider sidewalks, of course, and maybe perhaps provisions for bike paths, because there's three schools in the area, and we do have that extra right-of-way. So that's, that's what I can tell you at the moment. We're doing survey and, and then we'll be doing design next year.
Cool. And one of the things my neighbors pointed out to me was that those slopes, especially from the highway all the way up to the intersection with South Pine, is kind of heavily wooded and brushy. Would this project include clearing some of that and reducing the fire hazard there?
Yeah, I envisioned we'd do something similar to what we did on South Pine, where we took the cedars and planted dogwood and other trees, but
Looks beautiful, by the way, they're, they're blooming really nicely.
Great, yeah, that's kind of necessary on that Sacramento cut.
Yeah.
The cedars have grown wild and now they're big.
Yes. And, and kind of loosely attached to that hillside, if you take a look at some of them. Thank you. Well, those were the main questions I had.
So I assume at some point the design will come back to the infrastructure committee where this, this
Yes.
Before it goes out, so we'll be able to see what you intend to do.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
I also have a comment. Thank you for pulling this item, this gives me an opportunity. I got an email from a friend of mine, local resident, Brian Snyder. He's worked at Freed for many years. He's a blind individual in the community, and he has a lot of concerns about getting around Nevada City with his guide dog and the lack of accessibility for him specifically. And so just thinking about, you know, when we think about ADA, you know, width of sidewalks is important, and then, you know, not just for people who are in wheelchairs, but thinking about, you know, he talks about how there, there are so many trees that he just runs that are overhanging, that he's having problems navigating. He specifically talks about how hard it is to get to the other side of Zion and Sacramento Street and onto South Pine Street. The crosswalk by Forest Charter makes a lot of sense, but that's a little, it's a little down the way. And so just thinking about, as we move forward in these projects, thinking through this lens of people with disabilities as well, and thinking about making our town more accessible.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'd love to, and I can chat with you too about some of those specific examples.
Okay, that'd be great.
Great, thank you, Brian.
And I have one thing, two things to say, bike lanes, bike lanes, bike lanes.
Three things.
All right, so thank you, Brian, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time.
You got your answer, your questions answered there?
I, I did, and I hope, do you folks have any comment on it?
Yeah, sure.
Public comment.
It's public comment time.
Thanks, Lou, really for all that, I appreciate it. Yeah, Laurel couldn't make it tonight, but yeah, we basically live on that hillside there. And what I was wondering, because I just took a quick look at this whole thing, and I don't, I don't get the law yet, but I think this has been handed down from the state that we have to remove dead dying trees and these requirements are real. And, and I noticed there was, if it would, if any of that was a threat to a right-of-way, that the state was going to subsidize or do something to help with that situation. But I don't know the, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know exactly. I was wondering if there was any way I could find that out and maybe get those trees in that brush taken care of ahead of the schedule on the improvement on, on the street. Does anyone, can anyone help me with the law on that one?
Well, not, not the law, but we'll certainly have Chief Goodspeed reach out and follow up and see what, what next steps might be. So I'm sure I can get your contact information from
I thought it might be, it might be easier on the city too if I had it done, so.
We appreciate
I'm being totally good right now.
We appreciate your commitment to fire safety, really.
Yeah, that is, it's real, those pine needles are piling up. Thank you for your help on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, moving on to business.
Do you have a public comment?
Oh, public comment. Is there any other public comment on this item either here or online?
No one online.
I move that we approve number eight.
Okay, second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes five, nothing. Okay, moving right along here. All right. Item number 11, consideration of the special event street closure request for the Roman Angels Car Show event. We have some folks from the Roman Angels here, and Sean is going to lead us off on this item.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So after several decades at the fairgrounds, the Roman Angels Car Show has been stolen from unincorporated Grass Valley and be relocated to the tech center. Thank you, Chris, he's in the audience with us tonight. The activity is Saturday, September 9th, of course, was set up and break down the day before, day after. It's essentially all on private property, which most of our event applications involve mostly public property, but because of, to ensure that land uses is appropriate and that we account for parking and safety and law enforcement and their desire to put signs up to get people off of the highway and on the surface streets, the best way to do that is to do a special event application, and that way we can run it through all the departments and through you as well. So their event application says about 350 vehicles and participants and more than 700 attendees. I hope that it's more than that, but, you know, it's the first year, so it might be a little bit low. Additionally, the Chamber of Commerce will be looking to do a companion Seven Hills event on that Friday night. They were going to do Bikes and Brews if the bike race was going to go on, so they sang Buicks and Brews. They don't make Buicks really anymore, but, you know, something. So along the Argyle Way at the, you know, near the brewery there. So with us tonight is David Blakely and several others from the Roman Angels that I'm sure can share a lot more about their program.
Yes, if one of you would like, or all of you'd like to come up and tell us a little bit about the, the vision for this move.
Okay. My name is Jim Richards, and I'm the president of the Roman Angels. From a historical point of view, the Roman Angels was formed 60, 1962. And we have done, I believe, 31 car shows in our history. And I think pretty close to 19 were done at the fairgrounds. And this year, we had the opportunity of doing the show at the Technology Center. And that we thought would be an excellent venue for a change. And so briefly, running a car show is pretty complex, and it involves, I think, pretty close to 48 to 52 people. And we normally have classic cars, sometimes motorcycles, and trailers, although I don't think we're going to do classic trailers this year. Most of our folks who come to show their cars will be coming on 49, exiting on Ridge Road, crossing over, and then onto Zion Street, and then down to the Technology Center. From there, we probably will require some signs on those roads as already mentioned. And then we normally have vendors that include food vendors, because we do provide, you know, some food. Also, we have vendors that sell auto parts and auto accessories and things of that nature. So it will bring into Nevada City, somewhere in the neighborhood of, with, if we do 350 cars, that would probably relate to about 500 people who show the car. And our gate is usually around 700, well, we're anticipating 750, but it can run as high as 15 to 1700. And of course, the people who are showing the cars need a place to stay, so that will be hotel accommodations locally. Of course, they come early, so that would mean food and things like that. So it will be, I think, pretty good for Nevada City's businesses. And I think the charm of the city will will also generate a lot of people coming downtown with gaslit streets with, you know, gaslights. You don't see that everywhere. And so in our application, which I don't know if you have copies of that.
We got a copy.
Yeah, okay. You can see that at the Providence Mine Road location of building N2, there are three tiers of parking and that will be where our display cars will be. The vendors will be in front of that building and our visitors will be parking in parking lots just down from the building N2. And I'm sorry.
Perfect item.
Yeah, figures. And we are going to set up a, we may change the direction of traffic on the roads to accommodate in the morning the people. Most of the car arrivals that are showing cars come between 5:00, 6:00 AM to 9:00. And the visitors come from 9:00 and leave at 4:00. So we will have traffic from visitors coming in, basically from 9:00 to 4:00. And the people showing cars, some may come Friday night. I've arranged to have a security company, unfortunately from Grass Valley.
We don't have any here.
Who will watch the place during the night. And then we will clean up and depart by Sunday, although the, we'll have trash dumpster and that may not be taken, you know, depending on their schedule until Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday of the following week. So if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, let's go to the table first, you guys. I'll do a public comment after.
I guess my only concern is our magnificent intersection at Ridge Road and Gold Flat and the major cluster that it is and how we're going to manage all the traffic moving through that area because that could get, are we going to do traffic control or?
So the short answer is yes. The longer answer is as we get closer to the event, because you're not talking until September, we'll do 30 days out. We'll have a briefing with the police department, fire department, and public works. And at that point, we'll have a better idea of how many are attending and see if we need to place a unit there with lights, if we need to do sign boards, or if we can get away with just the signage that they're going to provide. We'll do whatever's necessary for what it amounts to.
Yeah, that's it. Because that's the only, I mean, the tech center is designed to take that kind of traffic flow.
Yes.
Always was. So I think it's great.
I understand there's 850 parking spots there.
It's a big place.
You could put a court there.
Far than all of Nevada City.
There were 500 employees per shift working there, 1,500 total in three shifts. So you had 500 people coming in and out of there on a given day. So, but we will need to manage that. Very good point. Anybody else here have anything?
I was just thinking about, I was just thinking about the people at Cassians Field. If they get the timing right to go outside when the cars start showing up, they're going to have an unofficial parade just under themselves. We should coordinate that, let them know. Now's the time to set up the lawn chairs.
Yeah, that's a good point. Like they do for the toy run.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to say, welcome to Nevada City. We're glad you're here. It's clearly a smart choice. And I can't wait to see how successful it will be. I do agree with my colleague Gary on some traffic management, although I will say, in support of that multiple-way, 7-Eleven way stop, whatever that is.
Seven-way stop, one-way yield.
I, people navigate that pretty well. I've had nothing but positive experiences at the seven-way stops, one-way yield.
All right. Is there any other public comment in the room? Anybody would like to comment on this or online? So we can just?
Do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Jim, I'm, you know, all you folks, I'm just excited to have you guys come and, you know, come to the, come into the light here. We'll treat you nice. We'll make sure your event is, you know, well managed from our perspective and that it's a huge success. We have invested interest in that as well as you do, too.
Sure.
We will be working on that. And thanks to Serge and Mike and Jade and to Chris for allowing this to happen over at his place. I think now you can, or shortly hereafter, you could sign your contract, maybe, that you're waiting on. But I think that's it for us. So Jim, thanks a lot. And we look forward to working with you to make this happen.
Thank you very much and we're proud to be here.
Thank you.
I move that we approve and authorize the special event street closure request per the submitted application.
I'll say.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Cici?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Fleming?
Yes.
Passes five, zero.
All right. There we go. Thank you. Thanks. It's official. Okay. All right, on to item 12, consideration of Resolution 2023.
Thank you, Chamber for inviting us here tonight. We really appreciate that. And do many times here and work with you guys at advertising. I do the sponsors and so on. So I will be contacting some of the people who have offered to help us. We want to make this a big step after you guys do it.
Yeah, and you guys have already hooked up with the chamber and Lynn, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, she's the person you want to talk to.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, on to item number 12, consideration of Resolution 2023-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, establishing every June in Nevada, establishing every June in Nevada City as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this agenda item looks familiar to you, it's probably because this is the third time the same phrase has hit your agenda. So not to minimize the point, but there's a specific purpose for it tonight. So in January, or I'm sorry, in June of 2021, the council approved a proclamation declaring that, just that June, June 2021, as Pride Month. And then in January of 2022, before I started, you also had a proclamation proclaiming every June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Nevada City. As you know, for the last two years, the pride flag's been raised here at City Hall. And with your approval, last year, we had a flag raising event and you've already approved the event this year for June 1st. This item essentially converts a proclamation into a resolution. So it's the same phrasing, but the big difference there is that proclamations are ceremonial. They're not voted upon. They're not recorded. They're not in the minutes. They don't have a number. And so, you know, if I was nefarious, I could just ignore them. I'm not nefarious, nor would I ignore them anyway. But nonetheless, the resolution essentially establishes, not essentially, it does establish the council's policy on this matter. You'll vote on it and it will be part of the public record. So with that, I would, you know, have you consider adopting the resolution after you hear from the public and from your colleagues.
Sure. Do we have any public comment on this item in the room? Or if not in the room, online?
No one online, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. All right, let's bring it to the table. Lou?
Yes, I am very happy to support this resolution. And I wanted to focus on the word pride in this declaration. It's not a matter of personal pride. My mother, God rest her soul, always said, never be proud of anything that isn't your own fault. But in my case, I don't think anything that I've accomplished in life, I've done by myself. I've done it because I've been supported by family, by community, by friends. And I am proud of the LGBTQ community here in Nevada City. We are a community because we've shared in sufferings, we fought the same battles, and we've experienced the same joys. In my generation, the battle was against AIDS. And I'm proud of that generation for surviving that and supporting each other and getting us through it. And I am proud of the new generation here in this community for taking a look at us old guys and saying, you know, we don't fit all those labels that you started out with in 1979 and 1980. And we want to expand it. We want to include us in this. And they stood up and we listened. So I am proud of them as well. So I am very happy to be in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Lou. Danielle? Oh, sure. Adam?
I'll go, yeah. I welcome any opportunity to celebrate the LGBTQ plus people in my life and in this room who have been so patient through the 11 months of straight pride that bookend every Pride Month. Bless them for that. Yeah, up in your face. A lot of people may not know about Osborne Woods, two men who absolutely changed this town. I urge everybody hearing these words, if you haven't already, to read the article that was published in the Union written by Paul Mattson about those two gentlemen. And we're, I mean, this city is the result of their work. This is, this city every day is a result of the pride they have in their work, which isn't to say you have to be a genius in design or art to be celebrated. It's for everybody. We have heard from, speaking for myself, I've heard from a lot of people who are very excited that we're doing this and a handful of people who are not. My advice to those would be to just look at it as the way like a friendly atheist looks at Christmas time. It's maybe, well, maybe that's not for me, but they all seem to be very happy and the colors are pretty. And then move on. So I am thrilled to do this. And yeah, that's me.
Thank you, Adam. Gary?
Yeah, so a couple of things. I actually did work with Mr. Woods on the Alter Show many years ago. And what a fascinating, interesting man he was. And extensive legacy, as you note, that we share. I am proud that our community is acceptance, acceptable, accepts and tolerates everyone. You know, we make room for everyone. We're an inclusive community. Everybody belongs here. I also want to say that given the time in which we live and the history which we've experienced, that I would encourage increased vigilance on the part of city staff and the police department. We've been vandalized. We've been, people have been treated very badly for being who they are and who they were born to be. And we have some sense of who does that in our community. And I think we need to pay very close attention to that. It's unacceptable. Hate is not a place, there's no place for hate in our community. So I think it's really important to acknowledge that and to encourage a concerted effort to focus on that so that it can truly be a celebration of inclusivity and the great community that we are.
Thank you, Gary. Well said. Well said. Yeah, you know, I'm just sad that we have to keep doing this and, you know, that people make it necessary for us to reiterate that we are a hate-free zone and that everybody here is accepted. You know, and I do appreciate our council members and Daniella for making sure that we don't forget and making sure that we don't just provide lip service to this issue, but actually put some teeth into it. And I know that there are things underway that are going to make it a little bit more entrenched and, you know, permanent. So Daniella?
Yeah, thank you to my colleagues. It's nice to hear robust comments on this topic. This is the third time it's come up. I've given a speech every time. Didn't want to give another speech. But I just want to say, you know, echo a little bit of what Adam said, that, you know, pride isn't just about celebration and joy. It isn't just about our cultural ancestors and people of the LGBTQ liberation movement. It is also Nevada City history with David Osborne and Charles Woods being tremendous contributors to the cultural fabric of Nevada City and the way that we experience it today. The Miners Foundry, KVMR, historic designation, they were forefathers of this community and their identities and sexualities were not in the background about that. So, you know, this is Nevada City history also. And I also just want to say, you know, as we get emails and messages about, you know, why does this need to be a whole month of pride flags? You know, Memorial Day gets it one day. And, you know, somebody wrote recently, Mother's Day gets one day, Father's Day gets one day. Well, Mother's Day is Mother's Day. Father's Day is Father's Day. Memorial Day is Memorial Day. And Pride Month happens to be Pride Month. It's not Pride Day. And I would just like for us to honor the way each movement for liberation wants to express itself. A flag is really, really important to the LGBTQ community because it represents visibility, right? For so long, so many of us and so many generations before me lived not visible. It's not something we can necessarily wear on our skin or that you can see it by looking at us. And so a flag is an important part of the equation. It's to say, we are here. Look at us. We are out. We are proud. And quite frankly, we've always been here. So thank you to my colleagues. I'm glad we're codifying this finally. It took us a minute to get there, still learning the process of how to do things here at the city three years in. So yeah, let's vote on this, darn it.
Okay, so we've done public comment. We can take a motion now.
I so, I move that we adopt the Resolution 2023-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, establishing every June in Nevada City as LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
I second that.
May we get a roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember Cici?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Fleming?
Hell, yes.
Passes five, zero.
Okay, moving on. All right, so item number 13 is consideration of a Nevada Street Bridge Replacement Project update and authorization to advertise for bids. Oh, we got pictures. Thank you to the Boy Scout troop.
Thanks for coming by, you guys.
And today we have Bill and Brian to present. Yay.
Double trouble tonight.
I know.
Look at this guy. Who let this guy in here?
When we.
Had to get me out of bed.
When we first started this design for the bridge, my boys were in scouts, would come to the meetings a lot.
Oh, really?
Now they're out of scouts.
How old are your kids now?
Twenty-one and eighteen.
Is that how long this has been going on?
Yeah.
Well, the last one we did took us 10 years, so this is pretty good.
Progress, right? You gonna be around for the next one?
I'm wondering if I'm gonna be around for this one.
No, Brian's gonna get this handled really quickly. All right.
So the Nevada Street Bridge is adjacent to the Broad Street Bridge over Deer Creek. And it's aligned with Main Street because, as Neil mentioned earlier, you know, that was a really old bridge and the wagons would come down Main Street, turn around in front of the Stone House area there and come back up Broad Street. So that's why it's lined up that way. And anyway, all of our bridges get inspected every year. And this particular bridge was determined to be deficient by both Caltrans and FHWA, which is federal highways. So it's eligible for funds and we applied for funds for design initially, which was 2014. And then it took a while to get those funds approved. And then we started, we did a RFP for bridge engineering and dock and engineering was selected. And it happens to be the main bridge engineer that we've been working with grew up in this area. So that turned out to be a nice connection. area. So that turned out to be a nice connection. So we've been working with the design, and we went through workshops, environmental, and part of the environmental, an important part of the environmental was to look at the historic location because we're in the registered historic district. So we looked at bridge options. And included in the packet are some of the historic photos that were looked at because this bridge originally had a heavy steel truss, like many of the old bridges had. So I have a picture here of this.
Standing at the Nevada Street parking lot, look across, the castle is in your face up on the hill up there, see?
That's not the Red Castle?
Yeah, that's the Red Castle.
I'm gonna guess it's about the turn of the century.
Oh, really? Well.
That's before trees came home.
Wow.
You can usually tell, you can usually tell time in the photos by the poles, by the electric, gas pole, on electric and P G N.
Right on.
So turn this toward the audience, too. But we had many, many other pictures were presented at workshops and put on the walls. And we had, you know, talked through the design. And then we were not sure if we would get the funding for the kind of bridge that was selected. But as part of the environmental design, pushed for that because of its location. And we
So you pushed for the historic aspect?
Yeah, yep. And so we wanted to make the bridge meet current standards geometrically with wider lanes, wider sidewalks, and structurally. So the new bridge will have a post-tension slab that is like a conventional bridge that takes the live loads from trucks. And then it will have the steel truss, which will take the dead loads of the bridge. So that it's a combination of structural designs that kind of gets us back to that historic look. And so we got fully funded finally. We had to wait quite a while because you're on the same list with all the bridges in the state waiting for funding. And so we're authorized to go to bid. And now that it's just taken so many years, wanted to present some of the information to you just for your consideration because this is ready to go to bid. And we would build it in two years because there's quite a bit of utility work that has to take place. So this fall would be that utility work. And then next summer we would demolish and reconstruct the bridge.
Winterize the bridge after the utility work is done?
Yeah, the utility work would take place in the streets to get utilities away from the bridge and to replace old water lines and also relocate sewer lines that are crossing the creek. And then we'd be out of the creek, winterized and everything
Wow.
for the winter. But it would allow the contractor to order the steel, fabricate the steel, and, you know, be fully ready to
It'll minimize the time that the traffic can't go on the bridge because when we close that, it's going to cause quite a bit of disruption. So if we were to close it for two years, it would be twice as bad. So if we can do all of preliminary work the first year and then move on to the second year and tear it down, we'll have a shorter period of time.
That's smart, yeah. Minimal impact, less impact to the citizenry.
Mr. Mayor? Can I pass around the photos from the packet?
How much shorter, Bill?
Martin?
How much shorter of a period of time? I live on Nevada Street. And a lot of other people do, too.
Danielle, it'll be half. Half. In other words, we'll close it for one year, one season. I would say it'll be closed roughly from about May to December.
It might solve, temporarily solve our traffic problem, our speeding problem on Nevada Street. That's for darn sure. You said May through
That's our goal, but, you know.
We would
Silver lining, silver lining.
We would try to improve on that timeline, but that's
You said May to December.
One year. Instead of having May through one year and letting it sit through the winter and being closed, it'll only be closed through one season.
Got it.
And all the utilities are going to support your schedule, right?
Support what again?
Your schedule?
Yeah, the utility, some of the utility work's already been done with P G N. So they're not going to hold us up. And then the utilities that are left are our utilities?
They are, so we have control.
You don't have any phone or just
No, we took care
And P G N's done there?
We did have, but we're, it's out of our way.
Yeah.
There's a chance we got it.
Well, we have enough time to
Yeah.
We'll need to make sure that waste management trucks have a way to turn around.
Yeah, so for that, what we're going to do is do a turnaround in the parking lot.
Great.
So that they can come down the hill and
So the parking lot will remain open to some degree?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and walking, you'll still be able to walk through?
Only about a third of it. The rest of it will be staging area for the contractor.
Okay.
So it won't be as usable. And in the end, it'll be more parking than it is now.
That is exactly the question I was going to ask.
Swing the bridge and bring the parking lot this way.
Right.
So more parking, yay.
So we'll get more.
Is there an estimate of how much more?
How many more parking spots, Brian? Do you remember?
Twenty-seven, that's great.
I don't remember.
But you also are going to be leasing all of the parking spots at the Stone House for the next seven years so that you'll have parking lots on either side of the bridge when the bridge is down, and staging areas on either side. And then once it goes back up, you'll have an expanded Nevada Street lot as well as access to the Stone House parking lot.
You know, that's a big deal because when we built the last one, you had to go all the way around town. And you don't realize how often you have to do that. So that's kind of a major coup that you guys put together. That's a really good thing for us.
Thank you.
When the, I hate to harp on parking, but I am on the committee. When the Nevada Street parking lot is finished, will it have two entrances and exits as it does now?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was a question someone asked me.
It won't look much different. It'll be a little fatter is what it'll look like.
But we're not sure how many additional parking spaces we are.
I heard twenty-seven.
It'll be in the parking study that will come before you, in the next few months.
You'll include that?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if there's two driveways. I just can't remember. But we, because we tried to maximize the number of stalls.
It looks like it on your architectural drawings.
Okay.
So a couple of things. First, I think the widening is really critical and good job on that design. I like the design a lot, you know. It's a really good design considering what you really have to do to keep, to build a modern bridge and make it look old. So I really like that. Bike lanes, pedestrian stuff, access, I think it's really important. You know, I go through that intersection quite a bit. It's way too narrow, I mean, with that bridge. The other, the other, did you receive the public comment that we got on the wildlife and the birds and
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we have three environmental permits. It's where Cora Engineers, Waterboard, and Fish and Game, and they have pretty stringent requirements on pre-construction surveys, monitoring of all the
Is it going to address the specific concerns that were in the letter?
About the ducks.
The bird that nests in the bridge?
Yeah, we
Some kind of swallow, I think.
Yeah, we do, it includes nesting surveys before demolition, which would not happen until next
I get that what you have to go through
Yeah.
the process. But that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking that the specific letter that came addressed some very specific concerns, including breeding season, which I know will be part, that you'll have to address that, that, you know, may
You know, we're going, you know, Brian and I will be working with experts all the way through. We already have them on board. So Dockin will be here for structural and that. And environmental people will be here, too. The soils people, you know, we don't profess to be the experts in those areas. So that person that you're talking about will determine when and if and how that bridge comes down.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, we're required to do bat monitoring before and during construction, birds nesting, and then fish and vertebrates, frogs, there's two species.
We'll keep Miriam in touch with you, Brian, as the project progresses.
Yeah.
But a great project. I like the design a lot. I really appreciate that the utility, that the P G N was done ahead of time because otherwise, you know, you're hostage, your schedule's hostage. Does anybody at the table have any more comments or questions for these gentlemen?
Gary got mine.
Okay. I just have one. Was the funding from the Bridge Replacement Program or where was the primary bucket of money from?
It's the Highway Bridge Program, which is federal funds.
Yeah, yeah. Once bridges started falling down in Michigan and stuff, they put a lot of money in bridges. They put a lot more in it, too, in this last bill, too. So there's a lot of money for bridges these days. So I'm glad that we got ours. Is there any, we did public comment, right? Nobody in the room, nobody there? Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Brian and Bill and a whole slew of their consultants from Dockin and others should really be congratulated for this effort. A $6 million bridge replacement in a city that has about a $6 million budget. When they started, we had about a four and a half million dollar budget. So this is a, it's a big deal. It's important that it honors the history of the community and its design. It's important that, you know, it honors and respects the, you know, the wildlife that is, you know, present in the Deer Creek and all that Deer Creek provides to us. So, but really big kudos to them for this. This is not a small undertaking by any means, nor will the construction project be. And they have a very good plan to reduce change orders, which is the bane of all construction projects. But Brian and Bill are very skilled at keeping those away from us. So I just really want to thank them. This started long before I got here. Even if it started today, I couldn't take credit for any of it. But real thanks to them and their team.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now you just have to do it right. Nobody's watching. It's not right in the middle of town or anything.
If I could say just one thing.
Sure.
And I know money is always an issue. And this will be, it'll be a expensive puppy. And, you know, you'll have to deal with the man over here to make sure we get it. But I've talked to Brian and I've talked to city manager. And, you know, that area of town became isolated when they built the freeway. And it's kind of, it's kind of not part of town anymore, as you would know. And, you know, people who've been here forever know. We have in the bid to replace a bunch of the railing down there so it's no longer aluminum, so it fits in. So that when people look down there, it'll have a different look. But if we, if we can't afford that, then we'll remove some of that. But I want, all I'm saying to you all is you have to make that decision. And I wanted you to know that that, to me, that would be an important part of bringing back that part of town. I'm just
Here, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we present the bids, you'll see there's some alternates for extra things that we can do with railings on the adjacent bridge. We're bidding as bid alternates.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I look forward to seeing those bids come before us at some point. So, thank you, gentlemen, and thanks for the work. This has been going on for a while. And, you know, I'm learning about these infrastructure projects and how hard they are and how easily they can get derailed. So the fact that this thing is staying on track and you got the money for it, and you got a lot of money for it, and it's not coming that much, if it's coming out of our pocket, that's a win-win all over the, so, thank you. And then I'm going to look for a motion.
I move we file the report and authorize city staff to advertise for bids.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember, Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Fleming?
Passes five zero. Thank you, guys. It's exciting. Thank you, guys. It's exciting. Then you can do the Broad Street Bridge next.
Make it so.
Okay, and last but not least, I think, yes, and thanks for your patiently waiting, we have Shivati and Larry, in consideration of request for Waste Management Disposal for a rate increase and an ancillary charge changes as provided for and set forth in its agreement with the city, and consideration of Resolution Number 2023-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, approving the rate increase for refuse service based on the U.S. Average Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers and modifications of the ancillary charges. Sean's going to lead us off, and then we have Shivati, Larry, and
Eric Creason.
Eric, good to see you. Thanks for being here. Go ahead, Sean.
My part's short. So our current agreement with WM, which I will always say Waste Management is, I'll never be able to say WM, sorry, is from September 28, 2011, which is relatively recently, but it's like a million miles, a million years away as far as contracts go. Doesn't expire till June 30, 2025. There are provisions within the agreement for annual cost of living increases based on that CPI. It's in the staff report, but it's 5.58 for service and 3.99 for disposal is what it amounts to. There's a new rate sheet and the like in the staff report. And they're requesting some additional ancillary charges, all changes. I will let them explain that. Happy to answer any questions when they're done on the contract or the obligation. But thank you, Shivati, for being here tonight and bringing this forward. This was on your previous June agenda and the previous June agenda before that. So this is not an unusual thing. The caveat that it goes into effect July 1 of, so next fiscal year, but a little under, a little more than a month away. Shivati, Larry, you take it, Shivati.
All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Fleming, Vice Mayor Fernandez, members of the council. You know Larry Picard, he's our district manager. Eric Creason, he's our regional public sector solutions manager. And I would love to go over the PI and the AS that we have and the rationale behind it. Really quick before that, I have two quick news information that I'd like to share. I know Sean forwarded you a letter. We're very excited that WM is investing $22 million in recycling technology at the Sacramento Recycling and Transit Station where all our recycling goes. So it'll increase the capacity to divert recycling additional 10,000 tons per month and increase safety as well. It starts on July 5, and it should be done in about six months' time. It does not impact services. It does not impact rates. We just wanted to share the news because we're always committed to recycling and sustainability. Staffing, we're fully staffed and have been for the last few months. In addition, we continue to hire backup drivers to manage any contingencies that may arise. Our joining bonuses are still in place. And we still are providing, are working on providing accelerated growth opportunities for our drivers for retention purposes. I'll be happy to answer further questions after I go over the PI. So the price increase sheet that you have in front of you, the year-over-year CPIU, which we use for measurement inflation for the recent 12 months, is 7.44%. As per our contract, we calculate 75% of that index. So 5.58, like Sean mentioned, along with the 3.99% increase, it averages out to about 5.2% overall increase. And just for your perspective, that equals to about .82 cents for a 35-gallon cart, which is the commonly used cart by residents in Nevada City. Just some relevant specific indexes for you. Trucking and freight went up by 12.65 Trucking and freight went up by 12.65% for the same period. Steel looks like it dropped 6%, but last year it went up 99.62%. We have now, because of the supply chain issues, increased our inventory. So our costs have gone up for maintaining those inventory. Our green or yard waste processing costs incurred an extraordinary price increase by almost 60% in the last year. But all these are, it just are examples to show you of things that affect us beyond the CPI that sometimes are not calculated as part of the CPI. And some of our jurisdictions have had to ask for extraordinary or discretionary adjustments on top of the CPI this year. We're not, we're not doing that. Ancillary charges. So we've, there's four items on there for ancillary charges. First one is a situation that we've identified where commercial customers, well, let me back up. So the existing option we offer assumes that you get three carts, up to three carts of recycling. Anything beyond that, you'll get a bin. We have two-yard, four-yard, six-yard bins. But we found that certain customers right now are requiring, using five to 15 carts. So to address this, we're proposing a rate for businesses that need more than three carts. Residential customers already have a rate. They get up to three carts included in their rate and then if it's additional, they pay a minor fee for it. In addition to that, we're going to pull a list and work with the businesses one-on-one to see what their needs actually are. Like, do you really need 15 carts? Can we replace it with a bin? Because it's free. So one is we want to discourage multiple carts. The other is if you do want one, then there's a minor fee for it. The second one is a 10-yard roll-off container charge for, it's an option for smaller services of heavy materials. It's occasionally, very occasionally been requested, but we don't have a rate. So every time we get our sales team involved, they come up with a rate. We call the city manager. We say, is that okay? So it'll be just easier if there's a rate for it. Similarly, relocation charges for relocation, for roll-off bins. Usually we have a delivery fee. Very, on certain occasions, again, not a lot, people have asked, we want to move it. And again, we don't have a fee for that. So we're just putting a rate, rate in there for it. The last one you'll be pleased to hear. So we have contamination fees for businesses, right? And again, the idea of behind contamination fee is A, state requires it, wants it. B, it is to create positive habits of good, good recycling habits, not so much to charge the fee. Because every time people get fees, if they get multiple fees, we have a recycling coordinator who calls them and says, what's going on? Can we help you so that you have education and don't, you know, put the wrong things in the wrong bin? Traditionally, since this started, we've been charging, if their recycled bin has more than 5% contamination, we have been charging an equivalent corresponding monthly trash rate. So some people have weekly trash, some people have multiple times a week trash and their rates are different. What we want to do is change that instead of a monthly, we want to make it equivalent to one time a week monthly rate. So it reduces, if you're just getting once a week pickup, it'll reduce your fine to almost, you know, one-fourth the charge. But if you're getting multiple times a week, then that, that adds up, that, that fine is quite hefty. One of the rationale behind that is over the last three years or since when this started, we've seen a lot of improvement in contamination, have a reduction in contamination and increase of, you know, better practices. So again, the intent was never to fine and try to make money out of it. The intent is just to discourage people and, or encourage them to recycle better. So that's the last one. I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
So let's, is there any public comment in the room right now? Does anybody want to comment on this item? If not, we can check online and then we'll start with the table.
None on that, Mr. Mayor.
Adam, do you want to lead us off? I'm just looking over there.
Yeah, thank you for looking over here. I, this, I guess, is just the natural course of things. Stuff gets more expensive. I just want to make sure that the public knows that you folks are here to help us and sometimes I think you can kind of be the repository of everyone's grief at WM. And having worked with you, I appreciate, I appreciate you hanging in there and doing your best for the community and everything. And I will take this opportunity to remind everybody that you're also helping out with the Green Waste Event on the 3rd of June at the Root Center from morning to early afternoon. As far as this goes, I don't have any questions right now. Thanks.
Gary?
So I do have a repository of grief. So, you know, that was send to really nice people to talk to us. Yeah, it's been a rough year. I would like to remind my colleague that the green waste is mandated by the franchise agreement. So it's required as part of the agreement. It's been a rough year. You've had staffing problems.
Yes.
You've had weather, you've had a number of issues, but your communication was abysmal. Letting people know, I watched trash cans sit in the streets day after day without knowing when they were going to be picked up, receiving conflicting information. And that can be fixed. That's not something that, that should be acceptable to anyone. You know, it has been a rough year and your costs have gone up, but you also, as a corporation, cleared $1.6 billion last year in profit. So there's, you know, there's always that piece of it. The piece, these fees, I have no issue with these fees. I've managed solid waste contracts for years. The CPI is built into the agreement. You haven't done anything bad enough for us to challenge that agreement, although I'm not thrilled with the services. The, the, the other rates make sense. I understand why you're doing them. They make sense. I understand the cross-contamination completely. And also the amount of time it takes to pick up five, five roller carts versus one bin. So I get all that. I have no issue with that. But I will tell you one place where we do have leverage that really matters to me. It's the operation of your vehicles. They're poorly maintained, they leak fluids everywhere, and your drivers routinely break the speed limit. I spoke today to the chief of police and he were going to begin to look at citing your drivers for breaking the speed limit. They go down my street, a 35 mile an hour street at 50 miles an hour. And it's primarily the recycling trucks. Because I see them in the afternoon. I don't see the other trucks in the mornings. It's too early. But we can deal with that and that's something that we can take on as a city. We don't have a lot of options in dealing with you. Even when our contract comes up in two years, there's a lot we can talk about. But the way this is organized in our area with the county and everything else, we have very few options in other choices for managing our waste. But there are areas where we can take action. And that includes making our city safe and the way that your vehicles operate in our city. And that's something I think we're going to be taking very seriously. Otherwise, I have no issue with the rates.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that.
I hope to see your services increase. They should, but that's up to you. Thank you.
Can I comment? Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for bringing the speeding to our attention because this guy needs to hear about that.
We actually have a, a program. They have cameras in their trucks. And when there's an event in the truck and they're caught speeding, they get reprimanded. And we do remind them that they have to obey the law. So if they get a ticket, it's on them and I.
I understand what getting a traffic ticket means to your organization and your drivers. And that's where we're going to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine. And we have very high, high safety standards. So people have got fired for less, so, not that we want to lose drivers, but. The communication, so I just want to talk about that. We had a multiple different things hit us last year, over the last 16 months, actually. And we're tweaking our communication, hopefully to make it better and better. What impacted it, again, it's not an excuse, just so you know what impacted it. One is there were, after the snow, some areas that had inaccessibility. But what happens is when we send out our dial-out, we send it out for the route. So the route can include downtown Nevada City all the way to, you know, the higher altitudes. And we say, you know, take your card out and we'll try our best to be out there. And people trudge through the snow and brought their card out and we weren't there because we could reach certain areas, but you couldn't reach the other. So that's a little tricky. And as much as possible, we've tried to post on social media, but not everybody goes there. We might consider next time to look at it more proactively where we can say, if there's a certain area where we can't hit more than a certain percentage, maybe we should just send a message saying we're not going to be there. Because in our attempt at trying to be there, we weren't there. And then, you know, so there was a lot of mixed messages. That's one. The other is sometimes in cases of mechanical failure, you talked about our fleet. It is an aging fleet. We had, in the month of April, right after the snowstorms, storms, a lot of mechanical fail, a lot of our trucks were in, in the shop. We even had to get mechanics from out of the area. When somebody goes out and he's on his route or she's on her route, when they're almost done and they break down, we, we don't know until after the fact. And then very next day, we send somebody to pick it up. But in the meantime, people are like, all of April, like, why didn't they come? You know, even if it's 200 people or 50 people, why didn't they come on Thursday? Why didn't they come Friday morning? We do send out individual messages to them. We are continuing to push notifications and make sure people sign up for those notifications because not everybody is yet. The truck, like I said, it's an aging fleet. About a year ago, orders have been placed to replace some of the older trucks and also in anticipation of our organics services coming up. There's a two-plus-year wait delay in trucks being delivered. So, but they have been ordered. Okay, I want to make sure. But in the meantime, as we get feedback, we attend it. So telling us about the speed limit, telling us about oil spill, telling us about, you know, just keep telling us and we'll keep addressing it in the meantime. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Shivati. Daniella?
Yeah, thank you for that context. It doesn't make me feel better about the poor communication. It helps me understand it.
Of course.
But it doesn't, it doesn't make me feel better. And I think majority of cases were not people that were upset that their waste was picked up the next morning instead of the previous day. If that were the case, I think we would have had a lot less complaints. But it was multiple days and in some places, we, over a week. So I just want to make that clarification. I have some notes here. You know, I'm thinking about this contract expiring in 2025. The contract allows for the CPI adjustment each year, obviously, but it doesn't allow for any accountability mechanism for failure of services delivered for us. And so you said you had a rough year. Yeah, we had a rough year in terms of our waste too. You know, last fall, all the way through the winter. And so I, I, although, you know, I appreciate that you guys are investing a large sum of money in the recycling facilities in, in Sacramento. That, that benefits the earth. It benefits us all. But what I would like to see is for you to reinvest good faith efforts to repair specifically with our community. And I've not heard that as you're asking for a price increase, which you are contractually obliged to do. I, I acknowledge that. This is going to happen today, right? It, it's part of the contract. But I don't hear those, those good faith efforts. I, I want to share something with you. The business community has come to the city with the suggestion that we implement a ban on single-use plastics in restaurants, right? Disposable, single-use stuff. So stuff that's not compostable. The, the business community wants to do this because it's the right thing to do environmentally, right? It's the right thing to do in this day and age. It also reduces plastics, forever plastics into the landfill, which I'm sure you guys like hearing as well, right? So in addition to making sure all restaurants to-go items become compostable, we are also considering establishing a composting program, right? We're established, we, we want to be able to collect those compostable materials and then also have a composting project and then potentially redistribute that to the community, right? And as that becomes a thing in the next couple of years, the city will be looking for partners, right, to, to help implement that. And so my question for you guys is, can you commit to being a supporter of and a financial contributor to such a program along with your rate increase tonight?
So we are very happy to partner with anything that has to do with sustainability. For example, last year, me and my recycling coordinator personally sat with Lynn and we were like, you know, what, what is your dream? How can we collaborate? And she's, and we both came to the idea of doing the Earth, Earth Fest. We were like, we need to do something for that. So not only did we contribute to that, we helped create a checklist for the vendors of what would be required for them to be eco-friendly. Another project we're working on, again with her, is to see if we can create some sort of badges for event organizers to say that it's, they organize eco-friendly events. So if they meet, you know, we have a checklist we're developing and we can do, it can get expensive. So we're trying to do levels and a different level based on what all you do with your event. And that also helps with tourism, right? Because you then are known for a city that has only eco-friendly vendors and events and such. We definitely work very closely with them for every event that's being held and work with any sustainability project. For a short time, the county had an organic subcommittee that I was part of as well. It died out, but one of my ideas that I had promoted then was maybe until you can have our services, until you, you know, it, it's expensive to have your own system, but how about something like decentralized composting program? There's softwares available where people can put all their information, people who are composting and willing to take compost from the public and, you know, share in that. So definitely something of great interest to us to collaborate and we'll continue to do that. So as your programs come up, we'll be a partner for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Those, those are the key things we want to collaborate on.
We're already committed to organics solely, not solely, but heavily with the county because as you guys know, there is a state mandate for them and for the city of Grass Valley. So we're already in the, the game, per se. So to be able to partner with you is, for us, is just common sense.
Yeah. In addition, we don't have anything in our contract right now for green waste, for AB 1826, SB 1383. But we do a lot of work between me and my recycling coordinator for the, for the county because it's part, required by contract. It's not required by contract by Nevada City, but yet we do all the work. The other day, when Cal Recycle asked for a report of all the outreach and education we've done on behalf of Nevada City, Sean asked me and I sent him a whole list of things we've done. That's not required by the contract. We're just, you know, want to partner and do the right thing. Yeah. But I get your feedback. We, we feel the pain too. We live here too. So we'll continuously work on improving, especially the communication.
Thank you, Shivati. Lou, do you want to chime in?
A very blunt question to Sean. Can we say no?
Yes, you know, I don't get to say how the council votes.
But can we legally say no?
You can legally say no tonight. The contract does hold that they are entitled to this, to the CPI request. And it does hold that you would provide it to them. So essentially, we would not be, we would be in breach of the contract if you did not approve it. That's not true for the ancillary charges, which are separate and apart from the CPI. So though that, while that option So though that, while that option is available to you this evening, it certainly would not be my recommendation.
Lou, were you talking about, were you talking about the contract in general or are you talking about these?
The rate increase for residential.
Okay.
If I could?
Yes.
I spoke to Dean about it today.
Good.
Asked that specific question, and I know we have counsel here as well, but, you know, Dean did point out that without a violation of the contract, which is not present with waste management, and the way that contract is written, it'd be unlikely that there would ever be a violation. It is not a really beneficial contract for the city, but it would put us in conflict in a way that would be unproductive for the city. And although he indicated if that was the direction we were willing to go, that he would happily support us, however, he felt it might not be in our best interest to proceed in that direction. And I do agree. As I said, you know, if we do not get some compliance with some of these issues around safety or the continued failure of pickups, because there is, there is specific language in the agreement that says that, that waste has to be picked up within one day if there's a reason for it missing. So if we continue to get violations and then wanted to go the route of specific notifications of breach of contract, then we would need to start a process of doing that. We came close last year, but chose not to go in that direction. So it would take a process, but at this point, he recommended not doing that. I was very concerned about the same thing. So that's, that's what I got. I mean, we could vote the way we need to vote.
We can also direct city staff to look at alternative options come 2025 when we re, when our contract becomes, comes up.
Did our attorney have any comments on this? I saw his.
He just left. Nope.
No, city council, I didn't have anything to add. Thank you.
Lou, are you done?
Somewhat.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification because I know, having talked to my neighbors, that I'm going to get an earful when this rate increase passes. And I wanted to be able to say to them, we couldn't say no without putting the city in legal jeopardy.
I don't think you can say that.
And I want that to be a part of the public record of this meeting. Now I'm done.
Very good. And if all else fails, you can always just blame me. You're elected to represent the people and you employ me and, you know, and the city attorney's office, of course.
Actually, you're not the one that's not picking up my trash. So I'm not going to blame you.
All right. I have a few.
Just one more thing. You guys are doing a great job locally interfacing with us and especially with the green waste. And I like talking to you. I said it before in the county waste and hazardous materials meeting, it's a systemic problem. It's the way WM manages our local problems. They manage them from Arizona or Texas and they often get it wrong. And that's systemic.
Yeah. At that, I think I had said, talking, talking to my neighbors at that same meeting, I think I had told you that everyone understood why their trash wasn't being picked up when we were all buried under snow. The issue was really a week or two later when it was still a problem and everything else was back up and running. And that's where the communication comes in. I know you guys have heard that and I think it is, the corporate office needs to hear it.
Yeah. And, you know, in communication too, I, we all hear, I mean, this is probably the thing I hear the most about from my neighbors who have particular issues and our constituents. And some of the things, and, you know, I, I'm sure you guys would work on this, is just the rudeness of the operators on the phone. You know, I've had, I had two people specifically tell me that whoever they talked to on the help line basically said, what else are you going to do? You don't have a choice, you know, like you're stuck. I mean, really? And they were just flabbergasted that they would get this kind of response, even though it is true. I mean, we are, we are kind of stuck here. But, you know, the thing I appreciate is that you guys are here and you're willing to talk to us and willing to work with us, you know? You've been responsive, you guys have been responsive. It's just that when we bubble things up to you, it doesn't translate to action. It doesn't. I mean, we have people that, you know, messages that go out to say, we're going to pick up your trash tomorrow. Doesn't get picked up. Trash cans are out, the bears get them. So we have to clean up five different people's garbage because they're all old and they can't clean up their garbage. And, you know, I'm talking about my street, but this is a microcosm of everything else that goes on. If my street is not clean, how do you think people who don't have a voice, you know, how is their street going to get cleaned, you know? And so this is not about me and us and our problems. This is about the way you guys manage complaints, the way you maintain your trucks, you know? We've had numerous issues with your trucks leaking oil and we talked to one of your drivers recently. And they did echo what you said, is we can't hire, you know, mechanics fast enough. But again, that is a, that is a you problem, that's not an us problem, right? You know, you're running a company, you guys are making lots of money, you know? If you have to pay people more, you got to pay people more. If it's not cost-effective to you, you got to, you know, spend that money in the name of customer service. You know, you could tell that we're, you know, different degrees of upset about this. And I know you guys are used to this, but, you know, I really would like to come away with some concrete solutions for communication and for just a consistency in, right now, nobody believes if you call us and tell us the trash is going to be picked up, nobody really believes that. There's no credibility in that messaging. And so we need to reestablish that credibility. You need to do some damage control on, on our community. And I think you heard that there. I don't know what it is, green waste days are great, you know? Maybe if you, you hand out pamphlets and tell us what you're doing to fix the problems that we all identified. Again, snow is snow. We're not blaming you for snow. But after snow, we're blaming you. And we just need some kind of, we need to be able to tell our constituents, here's the problem you guys brought to us and here's how we're addressing it. Now it's just us complaining to you.
Yes. Thank you for your words. And I think it's really all on us right now because we, we hear you loud and clear. If we, if your trash gets picked up, if you get communicated to, then there should be no issue, right? So that's pretty much what we have to do. That's my takeaway. That's our takeaway.
Yeah.
We do monitor what we call the voice of our customers. We send out a survey. So I've been looking at the trends, of course, and I can share it at the next solid hazardous waste commission. I'm gathering some data. So of course, it took a tank, but it is going up, rest assured. We got a lot of good comments this month. But again, like, like you said, like everybody mentioned, if we pick it up and if we communicate, then that, that should be it. So that's what we'll keep, we'll work on that.
Is that survey sent out digitally?
It is.
Did anybody receive that survey? I did not receive that survey.
It doesn't go to, it goes to different populations, so, but I do have all.
So it's a random sort of?
Right. Right. And I do have data which we get weekly, based on what feedback we get, either somebody from operations or customer service or recycling coordinator actually calls them individually and we speak to them. And we review those every week.
So, so, so what you've said is you've hired a lot more people, right? So you've, you've done a thing on hiring, you're going to do some quality control on the communication of your call center representatives?
Correct.
So they don't, they're not rude to their customers.
You're interested in partnering on future endeavors and potentially financially contributing to those future endeavors.
And we do.
Yeah.
Great. We absolutely do.
You're a good citizen as far as that goes. But what I'd like to say is that right now, you've told us what you've done to fix the problems that we've addressed. And so as of today, we're going to look at the feedback, we're going to listen to our constituents and we're going to see what people say. If it is, as you say, that, you know, it's going in the right direction, fantastic. And, you know, we can all, you know, celebrate it, the green waste day. But, you know, if it's not, then, you know, we're going to be like, okay, here we go again. So I'm just holding you guys to your word. We are holding you guys to your word. And, and I know that you guys can, can affect change and, you know, make this happen. So, you know, I mean, to a certain extent. Well, you know, you, you guys have to. You just have to, you know, work with us here.
There's no choice. Yes.
We've given you a lot of leeway here.
Yes.
And we're, you know, I, I don't see any problem with the, you know, cost increase that you guys requested. I mean, that, it just goes, like Gary articulately said, it makes sense and, you know, you deserve it.
Yeah.
And also the cost of living increase, that's just a part of defraying some of the cost on those supply chain issues and the price increases. So that being said, just one final comment, good luck as you go forward. We're actually nice.
I do know that. I do know that.
Yeah, it could be a lot worse. It will be a lot worse.
Yes, I do know that. I can just say, I just want to express our deepest gratitude for the council, also to the people of Nevada City. We, our drivers meet everybody on the streets and, you know, we do hear all the complaints, but we also hear a lot of good stuff. And they're very kind people, just overall. Again, we're part of the community. There are some systemic problems. Somebody mentioned that. And we'll do the best we can from here. And that's why I also invited Eric today because he represents more our regional office. So he has taken all of the feedback.
I absorb it all. It's all going back to corporate.
Well, good.
Shout out to my female pickup driver who wears a pink vest and is awesome.
Yes.
She's great.
She is.
Erica, thank you.
Erica, yeah.
She's awesome.
Yeah. And thank you guys, Eric, Larry, Shivati. I know you're on the front lines of a lot of this. You know, obviously, it's not personal, this is just business.
We are going to be watching the speed.
Please do.
I'm serious about that. I'm really serious about that.
Yes.
It's really serious.
Absolutely.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I'm looking for a motion now.
I move that we approve resolution number 2023-21 of the city council of the city of Nevada City approving a rate increase for refuse services based on the U.S. City Average Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers and modifications of ancillary charges.
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Cece?
I feel I have to say yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Fleming?
Yes.
Kansas 50.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thanks for hanging in here till the last.
Well, thank you for hanging in there with us.
We're going to hang in there with you. We, we're partners, like, like.
We, we didn't have a choice.
It's just what we do.
Yeah.
I asked for that.
Not about you, you're great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Bye-bye. All right. Do we want to do council members committee? Anybody? Lou, you got anything?
Oh, I've got too many things, actually. I just volunteered to be on my church's 150th anniversary committee, so I'm, I'm just overbooked.
There you go. Well, you're being of service. That's wonderful.
Adam and I have a vibrancy committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6:15 right here in this room. And we are looking at a draft public arts ordinance. Super, super excited about that. And I can't think of anything else right now, but I might think of something in a moment.
Fair enough. Gentlemen, anybody got anything?
See, I'm off to Pioneer Energy tomorrow, board meeting. I'll be traveling with Councilmember Ivy from Grass Valley, who also sits on the board. We will be working with, with Sean so that we can, I can attend meetings remotely from, from this room in the future. I also am attending the county, countywide recreation stakeholder group meeting tomorrow morning that has looked at, is really an interesting survey of recreational use in the county, the entire county. It's, it's, it's a fascinating survey. It's really in-depth. But one of the things that's surprising, in spring, the third most desirable activity, outdoor activity in the county is the Tribute Trail.
Yeah.
And, but there's a lot of other interesting, interesting things there and I'd be happy to share that, that survey. Otherwise, I, let's see, Public Works Picnic on Friday, I'm sure Sean's going to talk about that. Thank you to Shane for adjusting the timer on the lights on the tennis courts. And, you know, it's great. In your neighborhood, it might be solid waste and you say, you know, everybody, you're right, but you should live next to the tennis court lights. But that's all I got.
Thank you, Gary.
I was sick last meeting, so I missed it. I watched from home. That was very exciting. I don't know why everybody doesn't do that. But had I been there, I would have talked about the ERC tour.
Oh, how was it?
Super interesting. Few of us were there. I was very proud of Emerald Bay Extracts, a Nevada City company that was represented. If anyone hearing my voice would like their Nevada City business to be on the tour next year, please let me know and I'll put you in contact with Gil. What else do I got? What else do I got? Green waste event on the third, very exciting. Details are on the city website. I'm just saying this. You're nodding. You're nodding, that's fine then.
Press release, Ubinet, the Union, KVRMR, Cancelo.
I thank my colleagues and, and for, there it is, right there at the top, beautiful. My colleagues and my friends on the planning commission and the fire safety advisory committee are volunteering as well as people from WM, I guess they're called now. We've got the, the flag raising on the first, extremely exciting. That's at 6:30. I'm hoping it's cold enough, I can wear my rainbow sweater. Ruby, our new.
And if not, we talked about how you were going to cut it into a rainbow sweater midriff. In honor of.
So many crunches I have to do, but I'll do it.
Get that six pack back.
Because I'm an ally. Officer Ruby, our, our new dog, has an Instagram account. That's @ncpd_k, the number nine Ruby. Highly recommended content there and.
She's got a GoPro. You can watch.
Yeah, you can watch her train. It's fascinating. Thanks for listening, everybody. Here's my friend Sean.
Hold on a second.
Oh!
Remember how I said I might think of something?
Yeah, you did.
I totally did. I just want to note that I participated in my first ever in-person transportation commission meeting. We got back to in-person, it's every other month. It's great. Councilmember Ivy from Grass Valley joined the commission. Feels like there's some new life and I'm excited to, to continue to move forward on that commission. And then also, yeah, June 1st, flag raising. Lou and I have created a small program, a couple folks speaking, and then we will take the youth and go down Broad Street, Spring Street and Commercial Street and put the flags up on the poles like we did last year. And so it should be a good time, 6:30. Come out and join us a week from tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Now, city manager, sir, would you like to tell us what's going on?
Just a couple things. We had the opportunity to have NCCLI, the Nevada County Community Leadership Institute, is a nine-month program. Supposed to be one class every month, but we've ended up doubling up because of Snowmageddon Round Two, canceled a couple classes. And the last one was the government and civic engagement activity. I had the honor of being able to co-host that session with our county CEO, Allison Lehman. I'm also a student in the class, so that was fun as well. Looks like that will be an ongoing relationship that we will have with the county. And thank you to the mayor for sitting on both cities and the towns mayors attended. And we're on the panel along with the chair of the board supervisors. Great opportunity for anyone that is interested in, in any kind of civic engagement, but they cover everything from arts to education to government and everything in between. So it was good, it was up at the Root Center. Maybe sometime we'll bring it here into council chambers because there's also an exercise at the end of the day where everyone participates as an elected official or a public commenter heckler, as it were. So that's always fun to learn. Our next council meeting is June 14th. That's budget. So that is big.
Gary's happy.
Setting us up for our next fiscal year. Yeah, new knee on the vice mayor and it'll be, you know. We'll crest $6 million budget.
Too much butt kicking.
And if anyone's watching at home, our fee waiver program ends June 30th, 2023. So you can, there's still room in the program, you can apply for it and you can submit for sign applications or business licenses or a variety of other things. We have had one outdoor dining on sidewalks and one outdoor dining in parklet now, go all the way through with using that fee waiver, so.
Appreciate the report in the, in the agenda.
So that's exciting. I appreciate the council offering that up, it's been very well received. We've now had more businesses participate in that than we had businesses when we started the program.
Wow, that's huge, that's huge. That's it, I'd like to give a shout out to Officer Nick. I heard of an incident out at the tech center, surprise, where Officer Nick was called out there and he handled things. I just got a lot of kudos for you and the department for the work you did over there. So, nice work. And then the chief told us, if there was any kind of issue around, you're going to find it. He told us some good stories about your detective work. So finding receipts in the car and connecting that. So nice work, Nick, really, really proud of that work. Thank you. All right, and then, so you guys want to go? I know you do.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.[1782.03]